I'd like to welcome everybody out tonight. Don't have any scouts with anybody volunteer for a prayer and a pledge? I'll do the pledge. Blake, Mike, and Brian, councilman, will do the prayer. Okay, go ahead.
Our great founding fathers, we come before you this day. We're so grateful the blessings we have. We're grateful this great city that we live in. And blessed is to make wise decisions and to make it even greater community. Blessed is those that work and work for the city, they can do a good job. And blessed is this evening, we say the season of Jesus Christ amen.
When the Lord stands, please repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me, how little of a poll. Okay, Soli, consent agenda, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Which includes approval of May 3rd, 2017 council meeting minutes, proclamation of American Red Cross Week, and proclamation of National Public Works Week?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda minutes.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Carter. Got a second?
I'll make that second.
Second by Councilman Hardy, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries? Okay, now we have the public forum. Forum for anybody in the public that needs to come up and talk to the public about anything that's not on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll go on to the next. Council on staff reports.
Mayor Protem, council, just a quick update. The tank is fixed, we're just, we just have to clean it out and disinfect it and then it'll be ready to go. So hopefully that'll be done this week. And then that'll be up and running. And then we've got a few water leaks that have popped up, so they, we're not fixing that. I think we've had three or four this week on them, so. So we've been out there fixing those. And one of them unfortunately was in the brand new road that we just paved last year. But without replacing the utilities, that's the chance sometime to take. Other than that, we've just been out, Kent's been out, they did Utah Avenue. If you've been out there, they overlaid that on some of those areas that were falling apart. And they got that, where the water department put that line into the PI and attached, so. So we're starting to get busy with all the weather, but today kind of slowed us down. But we're getting there, so.
Have that new, whatever flow stuff is they use on those? What is it called, flow fill? Flow fill? That did a great job over on 600 East where we have the...
Well, they just, they just tore out the patch and, and patch.
I thought they flow filled it.
Now, if you flow fill it, you have to put plates on it and let it sit for a day or two. Because it's concrete that you...
Well, what the problem is, when they dug it, when they, when you dig a narrow trench, you can't get your compaction. So that's when, when you do a wider one, it turns out a lot better.
Sure.
Mayor Protem, council and the public, just wanted to give a few updates from the Recreation Department. We've started our youth baseball and softball, you've probably noticed that. We've got, the majority of the leagues have started. We do have some younger kindergarten leagues that'll be starting soon. And there, we've got six fields going tonight after the storm as well. So we're happy we're still moving along, even though it was snowing just a bit.
Carl, while we're on that, I noticed that one complaint from that gentleman over I think east of the ballparks. Is there any way to help resolve that kind of a situation for him? I mean, Dave kind of...
You know, until later. Well, yeah, but Dave sent a response and I think he was just gonna mention this.
I see it.
Yeah, that was on the light situation.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know Monday we had some games that went, that went over. The first games went over and pushed the last games back. And so we're looking into what we can get in long time.
I looked at, and I talked to Brad, we looked at all the ordinances. We couldn't find anything that's history. There's a, there's a general park curfew at 11 o'clock for those that are lighted. So that's kind of a real, they schedule games, the last games are usually 9:30 and it goes to 10:30. I just suggested if, if games get over sooner, we'll try to turn them off as soon as we can to help alleviate that. Otherwise, I don't...
What, I guess, what keeps you awake?
It could be the light.
Could be the light and it was reflecting off of something. But I know even up my house, it's pretty bright when lights are on.
The, the lights over the years have changed a little bit as well. Obviously, the ones that were put in there in the eighties are quite different. There's quite a bit of spillage. And then the, the ballparks up on Main Street have some new reflectors. And then the soccer field even more so, they're, they control more of the light spillage. And so that's something as we look at doing the new fields or replacement fields that we're looking at controlling the lights as well with spillage. The youth games typically too, we don't, we don't even start games there till 8:00 or 8:30 at the latest. But occasionally that first game at 5:30 goes over, you know? And when it goes over, it just bumps the whole schedule. So we'll work on that and try to accommodate. And as well, we could potentially have one games going, make sure the other lights are turned out so we're down to one field. I think that's important. Thank you for bringing that up. As well, we had our last inspection of the pool this Monday. So the pool's passed and they're ready to open. The county inspector did mention that on the lap pool, there's, the concrete skirt around the pool needs to probably be addressed for next year. There's some settling and changes that are trip hazards, so we need to look at that. And I have Greg looking into that to see what we can do. So that was just this last Monday. We're hosting, oh, also with the pool, we have, we're running the lifeguard training class this week. That's a 30-hour certification. And this first week, we have 30, or 19 students rather than that first one, training lifeguards. We are hosting an invitational track meet next week with cities from around the county that are coming in next week. This next weekend, Memorial Weekend, if it carries, we'll have a adult softball slow pitch tournament coming in. And then our next program to start is probably our youth tennis program. It'll start in June when school's out.
Brad, go. Nobody else from staff? Any council, Mike?
Just a couple of items. Want to thank, work on 600 East is one that drive down that street a lot. I can see why some of my neighbors were upset that they were, felt like they're gonna lose their, their vehicles in the, in a hole. But they did a good job, really looks good. Upcoming chamber events, we have a shop local event that will be, I believe it's gonna be in the early part of June. And, and that's all for the chamber. And then the PCT there, they've got all their parts cast and they're rehearsing for their, the Addams Family production that they're gonna do. And that'll be coming up during Onion Days. So that's all I have.
Counselman, well?
I'd like to echo, it's nice that 600 East was, was done. Those were some pretty big holes that a lot of people running into on a daily basis. Just to follow up on a couple of items. I have talked to Representative Michael Roberts regarding our street situation in Payson. And they're both willing to help us out and look into that. We need to find out what the origin is. One indicated they thought that the lobbyist was good. And the other one said, I think we can get it taken care of without and save you guys some money. Let us help you out a little bit more and we need to be more aware. So there's that. I'll keep talking to them and Senator Henderson as well too. But I think we've got some, some people there who will, will help us out. And then congratulations to the police department. I saw on their Facebook post that we're no longer in the 10 most dangerous cities in the state of Utah. We're still a little ways from our, our neighbors, but we moved up about 15 spots, 20 spots, something like that. Did you see what it is?
Yeah, there's 243 cities moving in the top 10 most dangerous and we're only second safest.
Yeah. So we, huge improvement, so I think we need to, to talk about that. That's a good thing. And then just by way of note, I'm gonna pull Linda and I will be on for probably all of our meetings in June. I'll be in Japan and then I'll be with high school students competing nationals in Birmingham,
Counselman Carter?
Yes, I have a couple of things. First off, I want to thank Scott for coming up and clearing that, having the workers come up and clear. We've had a fire hydrant on our corner that has been covered up for I don't know how many years. And Scott came and checked and noticed that it was, couldn't find it. So they cleared up. I wish they would've taken a little more time and cleared the weeds back. So they need to come up and do that.
Wasn't that the water department that did that?
Was it the water? Well, the street department needs to come and clean. And you're talking streets, you think 6th South, 6th East is bad, try 3rd. Come to 3rd. Anyway, just in passing. I also am concerned only because I have been called this last week probably two times a night about the kids that are riding dirt bikes up there on the property between the pool and the ballfields. And it's from the neighbors across the street. I went up there yesterday afternoon after the second call and climbed through the weeds, lots of weeds up there also, and got up actually on the track and tried to stop a young man that was up there. He went by me three times, zoomed past me and wouldn't stop. And I tried chasing him down in my car, I couldn't get him. Anyway, I think something needs to be done for those neighbors.
What is our policy on that? Because...
Dirt bikes or motorbikes?
Well, anything.
Anything, there's been four-wheelers.
I don't, so far, many motorized vehicles do. The problem is, it kicks up dust and all the people around there.
Right. And the noise at night. And when are we gonna get those ballfields finished? Have you heard anything from them?
A representative from Woodbury came down last week, met with Carl. They spent a couple hours going through that property and then down the old fields. So they're, they're getting some design work done.
Okay.
So that something is happening.
Okay. Because we told them we wanted it to get done. And I know that the residents up there are really discouraged with that. You know, they've left those, from when we had the big trucks, they've left those hills and the kids just think that's wonderful. And it happens to be right there on the Main Street. I don't know if we can go and even it out or what, but...
What, I guess, what is our policy of that for up there? For ATVs and motorcycle?
Well, we, we can post it, we can...
Well, I mean, I guess I'd just like you guys to meet about it or something. Can we meet about it?
Yeah.
See what Brad and...
Okay.
Bicycles go by, I don't know.
No, bicycles are fine. And that's what the neighbors said. But it's just the kids that are up there on their bike, the motorbikes and the four-wheelers and, you know, they're loud, especially when they're revving it up all the time. So something needs to be done for them. And I told them that we'd either send the police up, see if you'd have better luck with that kid.
And do what? Do you want us to just, no motorized vehicles up there?
Well, I think you guys need to have, talk about it maybe.
Yeah.
Probably ought to do something, really, I think. Are we, I guess my problem, question is, are we, by allowing it, are we...
Liable.
You know, yeah, liable for an injury.
We'll be...
Because it's really not a professionally designed course or something like that.
Maybe we could plow down the land. I mean, you know, even it up, then it's not fun for them.
Well, probably just needs to be, you know...
Yeah. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Linda, I just want to know if you got air when you're chasing that guy in your car?
I didn't get air, but I called him a few names. And it wasn't even a guy, it was a little, it was a young man. And then I felt bad. That's the ex-Ludlow in me, which you should know.
Okay, I have a few things here, I'll go through them real quick. One is Dave and I met with the school district this week and talked about incentives for a hotel and they were very positive with working with us on that. So we'll be continuing to work on that. So kudos to the Nevo School District for trying to help us out. On our economic development committee meeting this last time is very good when we had a representative from UBU there. And he talked about doing a branding study. He can do branding studies and generally he charges $7,500 to do that. But for cities and municipalities, he does it for $3,750. And so we talked a lot about that. It's a three-day intense thing that he does, so the people that are involved in this have to have three days dedicated to doing this. So we'll, we'll continue to work with him on that.
A student from UBU?
No, it's, this, this gentleman, he's, he's from the private sector. He's not a professor or anything, but he's in the BRC building, he runs the BRC building.
Win?
Last thing, he has win. Anyway, so, so we're gonna look into that. He's done it for businesses and that, so I think it should be pretty good, especially for the prize, so. And then also with our employment meeting, we had a good employment meeting where we had all the different entities there. We're looking at getting some with, with UTA, getting some vans to shuttle people down from Front Runner down there. Also, they put in a grant with the Nevo School District and MATC and UBU. Put together a grant for having manufacturing classes at the new center that Nevo's doing. And we're gonna be involved in helping them put together the curriculum for those manufacturing classes. So that's been a good thing too. The last thing going along with Doug, on June 7th, I need to leave at 7:30. So if somebody else is gonna be gone that day, we might have to get done early. And then on July 5th, I will not be here. And that's all I have.
I don't know that I have anything other than thanks to the staff and if you'll check into that on that house. And then like I said, I just think unless the council is against this, I just think we need to look at making that maybe off limits stuff.
Motorized.
Yeah, I mean, the problem is, the state went out now and if you want to ride your off-road on the road, there's a way to do it. You go get a license to ride it. Other than that, they need to go out to the landfill and ride out there.
They make just one area off limits or is that like a...
I would say the whole thing, motorized vehicles.
No, no. I, I just wonder, I know there's lots of people riding up and down the High Line Canal road all the time.
Well, that's, that's really not supposed to do that either. They shut that down years ago.
Well, it's not pretty shut down.
Yeah, that's true. I believe that's all I have. Oh, what's, I guess I have one question. What's the status on the KFC, Dave or Jill?
We've completed the review and we're just waiting for revisions. But all of staff has reviewed it, there wasn't a lot of review comments. The application was fairly complete. And so once we take care of a few items, I will be reaching out to all of the applicants we're working with here in the next couple of weeks. I know Councilman Hardy had asked that we at least give a monthly report on all the projects like we did a few weeks ago. And so we'll get some updates from them and have something out first part of June.
Okay, thank you. Okay, no, there's no scouts tonight. So now we'll move on to the public hearing. Request for conditional use permit to install and maintain a roof-mounted antenna, which is a small cellular tower located at 1052 South Turform Road, which is at the Walmart building. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Got a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilwoman Carter, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now we're in public hearing.
Okay, so I do just have a short presentation. This is a fairly straightforward application. We do not distinguish, currently we do not distinguish in our ordinance between the construction of a new large cell tower versus small. So unfortunately, Dakota Hawks, the applicant, has had to go through this conditional use process. So we're hoping that we can make some changes in our ordinance in the future. But the applicant is requesting approval to do a single rooftop antenna and also to have the single ground mounted equipment on the Walmart site. So as far as location, so here's a couple of pictures that was provided by the applicant. So this is just showing the front of Walmart. This is the area back by the lube center that, where the cabinet site will be located. And then it's really carved everywhere on the roof, this is located, but it will show that the roof mounted will be in that particular location. Here's another aerial view to show that the roof-mounted facility will be in this location and it'll come down, have the cabinet site here. And they actually have an agreement with Walmart to have an easement through their parking area in order to connect to existing fiber lines in the vicinity. And then lastly, is just another view of that, just showing how it will connect through the site. So the applicant has received the necessary approvals from Walmart and is just looking for a decision or approval from the city council. Dakota Hawks is here, if you have any questions. I'm not sure if he has an official presentation, but if you have any questions for him, he's here to answer those in hopes that he'll get a approval tonight to go through the construction.
This is a public hearing. Anybody from the public that would like to get up and discuss any of the concerns on this? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second? Do you hear that? About a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'll take a motion for, for oral denial.
Mayor Protem, I'll look at we approve the conditional use permit, the staff conditions and finding them to be the goals of the city.
Got a motion by Councilman Hardy?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilwoman Welton. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now on to item two. Public hearing for preliminary plan for the Springside Meadows Plan Residential Development, generally located east of SR 198 and west of the Highline Canal between 1700 South and 2000 South. Do we have a motion to open the public hearings?
So moved. Second?
Is that why Brian and Doug? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're now in public hearing.
Okay, so as Mayor Protem had mentioned, the applicant is requesting preliminary plan approval of Springside Meadows Development. There's a lot of background with this project because the annex, the property was annexed back in 2002. And so since that time, we have seen different renderings and redesigns by the applicant for this project. The applicant, each time that he has come forward, he has been using the guidelines of the specific plan that was adopted back in 2002 as his basis for the layout. With the changes in the market, the need for larger lots in portions of the development, and then with the reduction of the size of the project, staff had notified the applicant that they would have to go through the approval process again because it changed significantly from what was approved back in 2006. So the applicant hasn't complied with that and has continued to move forward. But the current application is processes, new application as I mentioned, so it requires approval by the planning commission following a public hearing and then approval by the, or a decision by the city council again following a public hearing. The planning commission has held that public hearing, a copy of those minutes replaced in your packet. For your review, there was a lot of public comment at that meeting. And then again, tonight is the public hearing before the city council makes a final decision. So the timeline that applicant is working on is wants to get the approvals in spring of 2017. So looking at approvals now. And then completion of improvements by phase. So there will be at least one phase this year that will be completed and then hopefully under construction with dwellings later on summer, fall timeline. So the project layout and design, this is what is being posted this time. So the applicant is still showing a majority, or you know, the majority of the single family homes on the exterior portions of the property with the multifamily, which is consistent with the specific plan located here near the Spring Lake Elementary School. Applicant is proposing to continue the housing product in design on this, on this first phase here, which is consistent with plots A, B, and C, but would accommodate some larger lots along the Highline Canal and larger lots down on what used to be the Butler piece. So that was annexed separate from the Maurer Annexation, but they're looking at some larger lots in that location. So a couple of design considerations. The applicant is still looking to have a neighborhood concept, which is anticipated as far as the Maurer specific plan. And so we'll be looking at a variety of products in each of these neighborhoods. Some of it just lends itself better for that, like with the larger lots, there's gonna be larger homes, possibly custom homes in those locations. So it would create very nice neighborhoods throughout the development. He is reducing the density significantly from what he was approved to build back in 2006. And some of that could be market, a lot of that has been just redesign discussions with the city council over the years. And a need to have some larger lots within the community. Home construction along the Highline Canal, this was included in the, in the packet as well as comments made by the Highline Canal at the planning commission meeting. It's just the concern of excavation and construction activities happening here and whether or not that will impact or compromise the slope that is stabilizing the open Highline Canal. And so that is something that the applicant's gonna have to look at on a lot, or on a face by face basis. RV parking and storage. We do require that if a development exceeds a certain number of units in the development, that they have to provide RV parking. With this being such a large development and recognizing that each neighborhood is going to be a little different, it was actually the recommendation of the planning commission that RV parking be addressed at the final plot stage for each, with each project. Probably wouldn't be wise to have RV parking in this location, but on some of the larger lots, they can be shifted in a way to accommodate a pad, you know, an RV pad on site. So we felt like where there's gonna be varying neighborhoods, it probably would be appropriate just to address that face by face. And then setback requirements also. Currently, the applicant is not requesting any modifications to the setbacks, but on some of the smaller lots, depending on the size of homes that they have in there, we do have a mechanism in our ordinance that the applicant could look at some very specific setback requirements by neighborhood. And again, they're not requesting amendment now, but we did want to throw that out there that, you know, if we felt by having, utilizing more of the parcel for the footprint of the home, that there is an opportunity for the applicant. This is a phasing plan that was proposed with the applicant, placed in your packet. The applicant has been considering some other phasing layout that may work well for, for the current market. I know that they do want to move forward on this phase one because they can connect into the existing sewer system, but there might be some opportunity to move down in this location next. The only concern that staff has with, with phasing, we really don't care if they start in the northeast and continue down or vice versa. We just need to make sure that there's two points of ingress and egress when you exceed that 10 unit number. Street layout, lot access, there's been a lot of changes made to this in order to accomplish the goals of the city council as they've been relating to him in the past. So first of all, it needs to be consistent with the street master plan. And that is, we have two arterial status roads in the development. We have the extension of Main Street and then the construction of a new 2000 South that will actually connect to and create a four-way intersection there at, at the highway. Not suggesting there'll be stop signs put there, but anyway, so we will have that additional connection to help, you know, feed the traffic in the area. So they do have those two arterial streets that they will be responsible to construct. There is a section here that actually goes on the Maurer piece that would not be constructed by the applicant, but they will need to find a connection, you know, another connection through to provide that second point of access. But this section of 2000 South would be improved when the Maurer property develops. 500 West, which is the road that goes in front of Spring Lake Elementary School, will be extended down to 2000 South, so it will also provide another point of ingress and egress. Interior streets will be looked at neighborhood by neighborhood as they, as you're showing here. Connection at SR 198, they will be using the city-owned property. The city did purchase a parcel there 15-plus years ago, recognizing that, we knew that 2000 South would need to be built and created. Recognizing that, we knew that 2000 South would need to be built and create this intersection here. The city did purchase a property there and tore down the home. The applicant will need to meet the UDOT requirements because SR 198 is a state facility. And so they have been in communication with UDOT on their requirements, acceleration lanes, deceleration lanes, those intersection improvements. So they've done a lot of work in that regard. Two points of ingress and egress, like I mentioned. And then one that was actually brought to our attention by another applicant today was, when, when the building, when the preliminary plans were provided for this overall development, there wasn't a lot of information provided for the townhome neighborhood. And so it was mentioned that the width of the access through the neighborhood does not meet the minimum requirements of, of the fire department. And so there may need to be some modifications in this development. Staff is still suggesting that you move forward with the preliminary plan, but that that would be addressed when this phase was to be forward. And then limited access. This is something that has been considered over the renditions, or with the renditions over the years, is how do we limit access on Main Street and 2000 South, but not see backyards, fencing and backyards? And so the applicant is proposing something similar to what we have in Maples at Brookside. So this is a, a picture of what we see in Maples at Brookside. So that is 930 West here, the Pace and Utah LDS Temple is located here, Temple Rim subdivision in this location. So looking at having a 29-foot wide access. So the homes can still face Main Street and 2000 South, but they would have 25, or 29-foot wide access in this location with a planter. And so it will live, there'll still be some access points onto those arterial roads, but they will not have any backing in the streets. And if somebody is there to visit the residents living there, then they're outside of that, of that transportation facility. So the private access drives would be maintained by homeowners association. But then again, it allows for the front-facing runs along those arterial roads, which will improve the streetscape. We're not going to see the backyard areas of the homes like we do further north on Main Street. And then it's going to eliminate the, the need for fencing. Okay, so Salisbury Homes has a lot of product, a lot of different types of products that they do throughout the communities in Utah. These are just some of the examples that will be in there as indicated in your staff report and as suggested by the Planning Commission. We do want to look at the product on a phase-by-phase basis. And just to step back just a little bit, we're, we're taking a different approach with this preliminary plan. So the applicant can move forward with the phases that can be serviced with existing utilities at this time. And so instead of getting all of the details and getting all of the engineering work done for such a large development, we're getting the preliminary plan approval and then the details and the final, final engineering will be done phase by phase. And so they have done, the applicant has completed a lot of engineering work for this project. And so they generally know that the storm drain system is going to work because they do have a regional storm drain system for this entire development. And so they, they've looked at it from a comprehensive, you know, from a, from a global perspective and then the details will be taken care of phase by phase. But this is some of the product that they provide and we will provide that information with the phases. Another example is they have a lot of floor plans that become, that are very popular with their buyers, but we don't necessarily want to see the home built side by side by side by side. And so this just provides, just as an example of the Aubrey layout, the floor plan, and how exterior modifications can be made to each of these elevations to make them look as though they are a different home. And so that's something that we definitely want to include because we don't want to regulate what floor plan people have in their house. But we do want to have a nice neighborhood, a nice streetscape, a nice curb and hill. But you know, there's, there's always a favorite. You know, even in Saddle Brook, there, there were some great favorites that they built time and time again. And, and the applicant was willing to work with this, with that project as well. Townhome product, this is a color rendering of the townhome product that would be provided in that multifamily section that's located immediately south of, of the Spring Lake Elementary School. And then again, neighborhoods, we do need to be looking at housing product that's going to create those neighborhoods, especially where we're looking at 80 acres. Phase one, it's going to be consistent. So phase one again is up, is just completing this area here. Plots A, B, and C of Spring Side Meadows have already been improved and homes constructed. So they'd be completing here and they're proposing that they would just continue with the existing product type, materials, et cetera, in that particular location. Larger lots, so there's an opportunity for larger lots and larger dwellings in this development. Exterior materials, as has been approved in the past with this project, that they would be all masonry materials. But there has been a request to use the engineer's simulating wood siding, so like the LP product or the Hardy board material. And the Planning Commission have recommended that that be used as an accent material within this development. And then again, all of this, because it is, a lot of the details have not been worked out, we would suggest that the city council approve a global development agreement for this project that would identify the goals that we're trying to accomplish in each of these neighborhoods. And that would be brought to you for approval at a subsequent meeting. Utility improvements, there are a lot of challenges with this particular piece of property or these properties in this area. So the sewer line, there's only a certain amount of capacity in the existing line up here in Saddle, or in East Hill and Saddle Brook to accommodate the homes in the development. And so with that limited capacity, the applicant does want to take advantage of what is there before doing some off-site improvements. Because in order to develop the majority of this property here, we do need to do some off-site sewer improvements to go down and connect into 930 West, down to Maples at Brookside, down by the Pace and Utah LDS Temple. And so there's, there's a lot of costs associated with that. There's a lot of approvals they have to get with county roads and with crossing utility lines. And so this would provide the applicant an opportunity to get, get started on, on this phase here while contemplating the improvements that are off-site. Irrigation facilities, we have not only the Highline Canal in this location, but we have a lot of other irrigation lines that go through the area. For those who are familiar with the site or that have gone and looked at it, all of it is being farmed at this time. And so there are a lot of private facilities that are in here that would need to be accommodated during this development or the improvement of it because not all of the properties being farmed are included in, in the development. Now, the applicant has faced these challenges in the past with A, B, and C. And so they're very familiar of what, what's going to be required from the Highline Canal Company and maybe some of those private, or those private providers. But that does need to be addressed during the improvement process. Electrical service installation, substation, the applicant has, is willing to, to work with us on dedicating some land to Pace and City to accommodate a substation site in this location. And then as a general rule, any development, they do need to extend their utilities for the full extent of their property. And so as these roads are built, they'd be required to extend the utilities to that, to that point, this point. So when adjacent properties go to develop, that they have those utilities available. And then because the off-site sewer improvements that the applicant will be doing at some phase of this project would accommodate, will have capacity for additional connections, they've actually provided us a serviceability map to show what properties could benefit from that, from that off-site sewer. And so the applicant will also, at that time, be requesting a utility extension agreement. So anyone connecting onto that line, he would, he would receive reimbursement for those additional connections. Amenities and government facilities, that is something that also I've contemplated in the, the Maurer specific plan. The applicant is, is, has indicated a portion of share of that open space that's required for the overall plan. So nearly six acres will be provided. And then he's also requesting to consolidate the open space. That is something staff is supportive of. We've had a lot of challenges with pocket parks in our community. And so I know the Parks Department would like to, is supportive of consolidating that open space in one location. And then it will be located, so you will have all government facilities here. So you'll not only have the, the open space area, you'll have the substation site, and then you will have the, the future fire station site on that location as well. Open space areas, it just shows the open space that'll be provided in the area. This will likely be modified because all of this area probably will not be used for the fire station and the substation. So we're going to try to get that park as large as we can for the benefit of, of the residents in the, in the area and the community. And then we do have some open space areas coming along Main Street and 2000 South that will also, one side will be used for a trail corridor. And then this shows the connections there of how we're going to connect the trail. So we will have a trail along 2000 South, Main Street. This will follow the high-pressure gas line. There's an existing high-pressure gas line that goes through this property as well. So it's anticipated that that trail will be, will follow that alignment. We are also showing a connection to the Highline Canal, which we actually have an email that was submitted by an applicant that wanted to address that. So I'll, I'll read to that in just a moment. But we are showing connections, you know, through this area and how it connects to the Spring Lake Elementary School. So other considerations, as I mentioned, complete engineering will be done at the final plot stage. The applicant is required to comply with all city regulations, including the access width, as I mentioned before. So that is a change that the applicant will have to make, make in order to satisfy our regulations. Will review by phase and with the development agreement in place. And so as far as next steps, we've got tonight's city council review and decision regarding the preliminary plan, a development agreement, and then final plot review by phase. And they do want to move forward with phase one immediately, which will also require Planning Commission and city council review. And then the decision by the city council, your options, approve, approve with conditions, deny. You remit it back to staff and/or the Planning Commission if you felt like there was some additional information that needed to be considered before you made a final decision. Couple of things included in the staff report, the Planning Commission did very well on their, on the recommendation of identifying all of these. But they had recommended to the city council that you approve it with conditions and that the final plots be reviewed by the Planning Commission. That is something a little different than what we require in our ordinance. Our ordinance only requires the Planning Commission to review the preliminary plan. However, because they were willing to delay a lot of the details until final plot, they want it to come back to them for final plot and provide you a recommendation with each of those phases. And then they want you to consider waiving the RV parking on a neighborhood by neighborhood basis. There's, there may be some neighborhood that they want, they want it, but there's going to be others that it isn't, it's not appropriate. But it does have to be addressed. We do have to be looking at RV parking. Allow the use of Hardy board siding as an, as an accent material, as I mentioned previously. Housing product and then address, and this again, the Highline Canal Company was in attendance that night, or at least a representative of the Highline Canal Company. And want to make sure that we're addressing the Bureau of Reclamation and the Highline Canal Company's requirements and working with other landlords in the area to make sure that their private irrigation facilities are accommodated. So I know that was long, it's a large development. And so I know that we have Rick Salisbury and Mike DiMarco here to answer any questions that you may have. And then again, it is a public hearing. And unless you have any immediate questions for staff, we can turn it over to the public.
Well, I just want to clarify one thing. Go back to that last slide.
Oh.
Mike or Rick? On that, uh, fourth one down. When they say Hardy board, that's a branding. It needs to say, that's cement board or engineered wood, correct?
Right. And we can put that into the document.
Well, we need to clarify that. Hardy's a branding.
And we need to make sure we, we listed, that we listed appropriately.
Engineered wood and Hardy board isn't the same thing, so.
Okay. And we can include that in, because I know they're looking at the LP product. So we definitely need to put the engineered.
That's all, one make clarification there.
No, thank you.
So this is a public hearing and I don't know, how many of you guys plan on, plan on speaking? How many of you spoke in the, in the Planning Commission? Now, we have reviewed the minutes and I will, being there so few of yet, will allow you three minutes at the mic. So the city council here, but you are limited to three minutes. So whoever wants to speak first, go ahead. When they do our packets, they give us the minutes of the Planning Commission, so we all have them.
I like this plan.
Surprise?
Carolyn Bowman, I know I've been here several times and most of the city council recognize that, but I do like this. Thank you for listening to us, my neighbors and myself. My only, I have two concerns. Well, they have sidewalk on both sides of the street and the elementary school. Bringing in more homes, we don't have a crossing guard. And that is a mess at 3:15 in the afternoon. And being that, um, we only have sidewalk on my side, if the flow of traffic isn't moving fast enough for kids that are walking or using their scooters, they are right out in the middle of the road. So I don't know who, I don't know if that's the school district, I don't know if that's the please, I don't know if that's something you guys recommend. But yeah, bringing in that many more homes, we need something done in the neighborhood. So those are all my only suggestions, thank you.
Thank you.
Jill, do we know what the sidewalks?
We don't agree with the sidewalk issue.
They are having sidewalks on both sides of the road, yeah.
I agree with the crossing guard too. I've been down there at that time in the, the.
Anybody else? No. District issue?
Jerry Bradford, and I did say a few of my concerns at the planning meeting. One thing I wanted to talk about, this is sewer and being landlocked because they're coming in and the Maurer, there's a chunk there. Do you have a little, a little thing I can show here? How do you work it? No, I see, no, there it is. All right, this is my piece right in, right in here. The school is right over here. And the sewer right now comes down to 1750 South and it comes this way down to 1750 South in front of this church and my house at the dead-end road where the road stopped. And it's, the sewer is in all utilities, but it has been dead-ended. And was told that that's going to be hooked up on, when there's any construction coming on. And what the city did is they engineered it to come this way, across the road, and then come back. Well, it's kind of a cherry stem type deal, which is great for these guys, but then you'll see this part, I think the Maurer's come out, they're not in with Salisbury anymore. So this is going to be dead-ended, nothing to come back sewer-wise to take care of these homes back this way until they do here. Another question I have is if these existing homes are going on the existing sewer system here, they made this church, when the church went in, right here, tunnel through into that and they have their sewer in the road too. So supposedly, I was told that when that hooks up to the sewer, that they've got to disconnect from that smaller line that comes through all the subdivision here to do that. I just question whether that's adequate enough sewer, that little 8-inch pipe, to handle all this big homes that they, they're putting in without coming this way with it. So also I have a question on that. They discontinued this settling pond up here off the canal and they, one on Smith's property here, they kicked a, a pipe over to here for the irrigation, which reduced my pressure about a third. So my wife has to take the hose around the water because the pressure was way down. Because they changed that without resolving it and without checking the pressure to make sure that that irrigation wasn't what it was before. Also, the next question, I think they've had, talking about these condo units and the kids. And they brought up last time about having a way for them kids, and they brought up last time about having a way for them to cross over and be safe. I would, no, I don't care about the rest of the, the, the community, but is there a way that they could have a fence around this where they have specific access for kids to go in and out so they don't have anybody run out, get run over? That might be something to think about either way. I think that's all we've got to say. Thank you.
So you want to, Travis, on the sewer and that pressurized PI has been addressed?
The sewer we've looked at for the phases they're proposing for first, and it's fine. I don't have any idea about the PI.
Can we, can we look into that?
Yeah, I don't.
Somehow?
I guess.
How is, how are these going to be serviced up, up at the Spring Lake Pond when the pumps are on, or how's that going to work, this whole area?
It'll tie into the Spring Lake Pond, so it'll.
I guess that was one of my questions, are we just making the longer hose?
Well, with the pump on, you have plenty of pressure down there.
Yeah, but, but when the pumps aren't on, I guess the question.
Um, we've had it modeled, and it's, it's worked in our, in the model for the PI down there.
But a lot of them gone, uh, Highline water, the, the farmers and that have that pressurized, which is different than your city. So what will that do to them homes?
Well, that shouldn't, that shouldn't do anything, that's a whole separate system. So I, I wouldn't think that would affect that, the farmers anyway. Okay, anybody else that wants to get up and speak?
Just maybe first, a question, are you approving at this time the number of town homes, the town home layout? I know you talked about different phases.
Well, it's a preliminary plan is what we're approving, it's the.
I understand. Is that, so right now the plan is to have, I believe, eighty-five units? Is that, is that?
The whole grid, yeah.
If that, if this is approved, that's what would happen?
Yeah, you have to make adjustments because of the access, so that was no good. So there might be some adjustments made because of the access width.
Can you state your name?
Oh, sorry, Evan Nixon. I guess what I'm wondering is, is I, just on these, on what's proposed as far as the town units, I know in the, in the law agreement, you talked about amenities being in, in the same parcel as the, in the high density, where you have high density, you have amenities as part of the high density and not necessarily groups someplace else. And I, and I think part of your, you have a recreational impact fee that is less for high, high-density units. And I'm assuming the reason that is because in your standard ordinance, you require amenities. And so I just think that there, well, to be equal, you probably ought to have some amenities located and as onsite in the high-density area. Be matched by that. I was, I guess I was also wondering, I didn't notice any, any parking, any, any addition other than what's for the individual units? Was there any plan for, for parking, additional parking?
You're asking. Every unit has its own full-size driveways, so you'd have two units in each garage and two units in each drive space. Additional parking above and beyond that, they'll have parking within their right-of-way in front of their unit, but nothing else. The H-Way typically controls that, will not let them park on the main streets within the subdivision.
So I, I, you said that you'd be able to park their right-of-way. Talk about the townhomes. So you've got a twenty-three-foot wide street, and you're going to allow parking on there?
No, they'll be able to park within their own driveways, and then when they do the final design for the subdivision, if there's room left over, they typically add small sections of parking, but that final design hasn't been completed yet.
So I guess that was my question to begin with. So will the, will the townhome subdivision layout come back for approval at a future date? So we're not, we're not approving the number of units right now.
They could potentially, but with those notes that they do need to look at the access width. I think one thing is clarification, Evan Nixon has another project that he's doing in Payson, and he's the one that brought up the width of the access to us today, or, or within the last couple of days. And so he is located in the RMF-10 zone, which is located on the southwest part of Payson. So the parking requirements are different in the RMF-10 zone and in this residential zone with use of planned residential development. So I know that he's sort of comparing what's being required for his development versus what they're required here, but there are two different sets of rules based on the zoning that's put in place. Sure.
I guess, last, I just, I know that there, I think the, the elevations you showed is the same, put in the same, at least you're showing the same units as what you have at Park View and Spanish Park, similar. I think there's, same, what you showed is the same. And it just, and I know of those, the rear elevation of those units is, is flat, it's monolithic, it's a straight, straight, flat roof, well, not flat roof, but it's the back end of the gable, but there is, so there is no, there's no change in elevation on it and that, so.
So put your concerns in writing, you can get all of them else forward, or your questions to us, so when yours is coming up, we can review some of the questions.
Yeah, I guess my, like Jill was saying, I just, I think, in my mind is that, you know, if you're going to have a town home part of this, I know you have ordinances in place for that type of facility, that, I know it's different, but I think where you can, where the, particularly where the agreement requires them to put amenities in, and that, that you try and make it as, as close to matching what, what you want for townhomes and the rest of the city.
Well, like you said, put your concerns on paper, we'll, we'll share with staff, or you can send it to staff, they can send it to us, whatever.
Sure.
We'll look at it.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
And that's been the challenge with this development a little bit, because even at the planning commission meeting, there's a lot of discussion about the regulations, but it comes down to, we have a specific plan that was adopted for this. When this property was in, since 2002, we've had a lot of changes in our regulations since then. And so still, if the applicant is still meeting the, the requirements of that specific plan, and still with staying within those densities, you know, that's, you know, it's, it's just been a long time since the development, been a lot of changes, and so we do have to take that in consideration that the applicant is entitled to a certain type of development, unit development layout, which may be different than others on the districts in our community or even the regulations in that particular zone as of today's date.
My name's Katie Cutler. I live in the Maples, and my question is, is this going to be one HOA with single-family homes and townhomes together?
No.
No? So they will be separated? Because that's a huge issue from where we are in the Maples, because we have one HOA, so we have townhomes and then we have single-family residents. And when you create a type of a plan where you have the access road, like you showed, the HOA is responsible to clear that of all the snow, the residents have to take their garbage cans out past the access road, out to the main road, because the garbage, the city trucks do not come in on that access road, and everyone that is in the HOA where we are, in the townhomes and the resident homes, hates that plan. So just a message to the city planners, it may look fine on paper, but the actual usage of it and the fact that the residents in the single-family homes have to pay a much lesser monthly fee for that, but those fees become intermingled, and so we're actually paying to service the townhomes, and I think that's something that the city council needs to be very, very cautious of, that you don't create another facility like the Maples HOA, because they are having a lot of problems now. They're going to have to spend money to go back and rewrite their documents to separate those two because of the problems that it's created when you have a multi-townhome and single-family development. Thank you.
Bert?
Jill, I can't see that, so just go back to where the pathway was and the high-pressure gas line is.
I just want to make sure I'm up to speed.
We need to have you come up, come up.
Yeah, we need to have you come up and talk to the microphone first.
And say your name for the record.
And I know you may not be able to read it.
I just wanted to make sure. Bert, I'll lurk down.
Was it down?
That didn't work. That didn't work.
So this one will work?
Yeah. It's on your pathways, it's where.
So correct me if I'm wrong, and I'll walk away from mine, because to my knowledge, unless they've moved that high-pressure gas line, high-pressure gas line comes over, down here, crossed here, and across. Does that block it, anybody? Does none come down, cross here, and then across the road?
Good point. There's actually two high-pressure gas lines. So you do have the one, I mean, you have it come off of here, well, it comes off of the hillside, on the north side of the development, comes down to where the Nevo TAP is. So you've got that regulating station that's there with the concrete around it, that fence.
Yes.
That line feeds the Nevo Power Plant on the north side of Payson, so yes, you are correct. There is a high-pressure gas line that goes down, you know, down by the school. I don't know if it crosses Bradford's or in that general, or it goes back behind. So the Christiansen piece. And then it goes across the highway, goes all the way down by Weineger Estates, Walmart area, and comes back around. So yes, thank you for bringing that, because there are two high-pressure gas lines. So you have the one that goes to the Nevo Power Plant, but then you do have the other high-pressure facility that comes out of Payson Canyon and down, continues down 12,000 South, goes out NEFI and beyond. So yes, thank you.
So due to the tropical that land, where that, so they're going to bring their homes over to Jim's place, the five-acre place they, the place they didn't buy, all that ground settles or blows to the north. Is the sewer going to be deep enough to gradually blow back to the south for the others when they develop further, or we're going to have to put other station in?
Yeah, I'm not sure if you've looked at depths.
It shifts, I can't remember the depth, but it's pretty deep when they cross the road, the highway.
And I might be able to find that serviceability map.
It's the highway? I can't remember, yeah, I want to say it was around there.
Anybody else? Okay, motion to call the public. So moved? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All? Motion to adjourn. Discussion?
I did fail to read this email. Sorry, can I address this email real quick? I apologize. So, because this was submitted for the public comment, so, and then also, Bert, I will get you a copy of the serviceability map that the, that the engineer sent to us, actually shows all the properties that could be sewn into that, that would probably be very helpful.
Can I get that too?
Yes. Okay, so, so this is from Lane Batty. So he says, "As I was looking at the map, I did not notice access or a trail connecting 12,000 South with the Highline Canal Road. One day, it is most likely that the canal will be enclosed. The Murdock Canal was enclosed a few years ago. It now serves as a walking, biking, skating, and horseback riding trail, and is wheelchair-accessible. It is 17 miles long and goes from 800 north in Orham to Thanksgiving Point. People are already using the Highline for such purposes. I think it would be wise to make sure that people have access to areas that already exist for physical activity without having to build new ones. I have cited a few reasons that, reasons that benefit the community by doing so. Number one, lack of community, lack of community and public access to safe, open, and green space is a critical area of concern for urban residents. Number two, open space provides recreational areas for residents and helps to enhance the beauty and environmental quality of neighborhoods. Number three, it is believed that urban planning decisions have a key role in, to play in combating growing levels of obesity and helping prevent lifestyle-related diseases through facilitating physical activity and positive mental health. Number four, it has been associated with better speech and our health, reduces stress levels, and reduced depression and more. Number five, according to the World Health Organization, physical inactivity is a major public health risk. One study found that people who use public open spaces are three times more likely to achieve recommended levels of physical activity than those who do not use the spaces. Users and potential users prefer nearby attractive and larger parks and open spaces. Number six, improving access to opens, to public open space has a potential to increase levels of physical activity and to have mental health benefits and reduce healthcare and other costs. Thanks for the opportunity to provide input. Signed, Lane Batty." So I did follow up with Mr. Batty, which I don't believe he is here, but just going back to this, to this map here, we are showing a neighborhood connector that will be accommodated within this phase of the project. We have done that in other areas north of here. There are some other trail connectors, we have trail connectors in Green Ridge, we have those because we know we need to maintain that opportunity. Because at some point in time, we are, there's a potential that we're, we could have a very usable facility in this location, and those connections to the trail are going to be necessary in order for it to be easily accessed. And so people aren't having to drive to a location or having to walk a long distance in order to utilize that facility. So, so we do already have some in the vicinity, some have been built, some of them haven't been built, but we do have that opportunity, and we do want to continue with what we've done in the past by adding another connection in this neighborhood to provide future access to what could be our section of the Bonneville Shoreline Trail.
Thank you. Discussion, everybody?
I got, I got one item. The piece of prop around 2000 by the townhomes on the north and south side of that, where the road doesn't connect. Has anybody, I'm sure somebody's talked to that landowner, see if there's a way to connect that, because if, if you're going to have to have two ingresses and going out of the property you have, put the road through the townhomes, that's not going to work putting a main through, road to the townhomes. I see a real bottleneck and a problem there that's not being addressed in this at all.
We've looked at some different solutions. That actually has been something that we have discussed with the applicant of, you know, especially where this Mower piece here and this Mower piece here are not included as part of this layout. And so finding a way to get those connections. So there has been some discussion of, do you widen, you know, do you have a public road that goes through this development to provide an access? Or does the applicant just build a temporary road, you know, through there to maintain the secondary point of access, but when they go to, you know, when it can connect, then that secondary access can be eliminated? So we have been discussing some different options for the applicant, and that's why I had specifically mentioned the two points of ingress and egress, because just with the layout of those properties, or the exclusion of those two parcels, it does create some challenges for the applicants.
Because, because I think it'd be really difficult to prove having the main road between those two, all those phases, go right through the middle of the townhomes. I think that would be something that would be hard, going down the road that won't be able to approve.
Yeah, if we can find another option, that would be ideal, but again, you know, we've got that requirement, and, you know, but no applicant wants to come in and build a temporary road just to come in and tear it, tear it out at some point in the future. They really like that to be in a permanent location instead of a temporary location.
1750 South is a private road. Just so you know, that is not a constructed.
Yes, and that, I, I believe that was in the planning commission minutes also, that was a concern raised at the planning, at the planning commission level, is what, what roads are going to be used for construction access? I mean, this is a lot of homes, applicant's going to look at some smaller phases, but there's still going to be a lot of activity in this area, and we want to make sure that we are very respectful of, you know, private lane. and we want to make sure that we are very respectful of, you know, private lanes, private access. And so that's something we would definitely need to look at at pre-construction of where those construction routes are going to be.
Mike, Doug, Linda?
No questions?
Let's go. Entertained motion. Nobody else wants to try this, I'll try it. Okay, I would move that we approve the preliminary plan continued upon the satisfaction of staff suggestions and the product, and the preparation of a develop agreement, development agreement to establish expectation and requirements for each phase, and approve the preliminary plan with conditions. Specifically also that the global development agreement be included. That we include the planning commission recommendations, I thought their, their recommendations were excellent. And I don't know if there's other items that I need to include in this.
The only other one I would say is with the, with the townhome, because there wasn't a lot of information provided at this time that there'd be some additional review of that to make sure we've addressed access.
And I'm not going to agree with that, include that in my motion.
And one thing, Mike, you want, Mike, want to change is because the planning commission had the Hardy Board, you might want to change.
That, that's true, yeah, I'll also make that a motion.
So we're okay with the Hardy Board product and, you mean a different term, and the LP product, which shows that.
Well, one's the board, the other's the engineered board.
But we wanted to provide options, so we'll look at that.
So we have a motion by Councilman Hardy.
I'll second it.
Second, by Councilman Hewlett, all in favor?
Aye.
That'll be, yeah, aye, opposed. Motion carries. Okay, item three is tabled, I guess, or struck from the agenda. On to four. Resolution for the development agreement of Pageant US Estates, no. Development agreement for our apartments at the depot located approximately 700 north and 400 west.
Yes. So this is just for the development agreement, this is an overview, this is only slide, oh, I have two slides. Okay, so I won't take too long, but just as an overview, we are looking at 900 north, approximately 900 north and 400 west. It is 168-unit apartment complex located in our community. Planning commission has recommended approval, City Council has granted preliminary development plan and final development plan approval on this. And so what we're doing is putting all those requirements or waivers or anything that was done as part of that public hearing process, we've incorporated that into the development agreement. So again, location here, this is just a picture to show the types of materials and design of the buildings that will be in the development. Now, as far as the City Council decision, you can approve, you can amend and approve, or you can amend it back to staff if you felt like we missed something or if we need to work on a little bit more. We did provide a copy of this development agreement to the applicant, and Jack Hepworth is here representing Destination Homes. But they only asked for one small change, you know, with the text of the ordinance, but it would actually be, provide them a lot of flexibility to get this project going. So instead of, as it reads now, is that we would not allow any building permits to be issued until all of the public improvements are completed. So it's going to be all the frontage along 400 West and other improvements on the site, and they are requesting that that be modified until issuance of a certificate of occupancy, because they do want to do some vertical construction at the same time that they are doing the off-site improvements as well as some of the amenities. So I don't know if Mr. Hepworth would like to add anything to that, or otherwise he's just looking for approval from the City Council.
That's important for us, it's just critical for us, getting going on the verticals.
Can you comment? Entertained motion, approval of the resolution?
I'll make a motion, that way you approve the resolution, 0517 to 17A. The development agreement for the apartments at the depot.
Got a motion by Councilman Hewlett, we got a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman Carter, all in favor? Roll call vote.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. I'll squish it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, resolution for the interlocal agreement with the Utah County regarding vote by mail.
So this is just simple, the county is going to administer our vote by mail election. So the reason we're using the county is they get discounted rate on the postage. We didn't use them, it wouldn't even be feasible for us to do it. But we want to do vote by mail because your turnout increases significantly, so we feel it's good. We had a meeting with the county last Thursday, and the city's all discussed it with him, and we feel like it's a good thing to do, get moving forward on it.
Did have a couple of questions, so they will do the count, and the count results of the count will be announced by them?
Yes.
How will it be announced?
So on their website, like last year, as I watched the park tax, they would just update their website. So you just go on their website and they'll have it on their website, and then they'll, they can send it to me, I'm sure, if I think we send that to me, we can also do that through our website if you prefer.
I've got a question, sir. What about provisional ballots, I know a lot of times we have provisional ballots, if it's vote by mail, you aren't going to get anything, how's that handled?
So everybody will get their ballot through the mail, and we'll have a service center. It's, it's not a polling location, people can't come vote, what they do is they come and vote provisionally. So their ballot will not be included in that preliminary count, it'll be included after. So it's much easier for people to keep that ballot that they get in the mail and just mail it back in. But if they don't have it and they come to the service center, they will have to vote provisionally.
So anybody can come vote that doesn't get a ballot in the mail?
Yeah, provisionally, it'll be.
Provisionally, okay.
And if they don't get it, so they'll mail it out 21 days before the election day, so if people don't see it, and we're going to put something on our Facebook, our website, on the sign that says watch for that, try to educate people, because a lot of times people just throw stuff away, they don't know what they're looking for, so we're going to do everything we can to educate people.
And that was my next question, going with the education, I know we have, we'll send out stuff in our bills and everything, but there's quite a few people that, I'm one of these Benannex that don't, doesn't get anything from the city, so I'm not going to be educated in that means, so.
Right.
So I just, we just need to make sure, some way we try to get those people that don't get something from the city, all the people Benannexed out in the fields areas, so. And I don't know how to do that, but.
Yeah. I don't either, just, I don't know, hopefully this word gets out if we keep talking about it and post up. Yeah, we'll do everything we can.
Anybody else? Entertained motion?
So all votes are by mail?
Yes. And there's only two cities and all of Utah counties that aren't doing vote by mail. Everybody else is doing vote by mail, and if.
Who is that anyway?
It's Highland and Mapleton. They're concerned about voter fraud, but we talked about that, and, you know, you can have voter fraud even at the polls. So it's, it's funny, they mentioned that. Yeah, but they, if Chaffetz doesn't continue, that's the wrench that can be thrown in the whole thing, they will do vote by mail, even Highland and Mapleton, because it will be a federal election, and the county's in charge of those, and they are doing vote by mail.
And you said, and it'll cost us more?
It'll cost us more, because you'll have the bigger turnout, typically, in a municipal election, you don't have quite the turnout like you do a federal election. So, to be continued, I guess, stay tuned. So call Chaffetz and tell him to just take it out, or wait till next year, so it's not on our budget.
Entertained motion?
Mayor Proton, I'll make the motion that we approve resolution number 517, 2017, regarding voting by mail and the interlocal cooperation agreement.
Got a motion by Councilman Hardy, do we got a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman Hewlett, roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Okay, last one, well, second to last one, discussion regarding net metering for the solar power.
Mayor Council, just, part of this is an update, and I wrote in your packet, a net gender request, but, a little history, but we met with the citizen group that the solar customers within the city, approximately a month ago, we're meeting with them again Tuesday evening. And the first meeting, we, we listened to their comments and concerns, and we came back and talked about it as staff, and as I put in your thing, how the old policy was administered. The council adopted a new policy, which is somewhat different, Mr. Berg indicated that the old study did not account for the potential subsidies from the regular customers to the net metering. As we talked to the customers, I think most of the solar customers would like to be grandfathered. There's approximately 100 of them at the time that we changed the policy or changed the fee structure. So we talked about the possibility of being able to do that, I think initially there's more work for utility billing, but Cassell's working on fix the, share all things within the next couple of months, it would not be a big issue, so. We're okay grandfathering those, we think it ought to be grandfathered for a specific period of time, and that the grandfather clause would be to that person specifically, if they ran out their home, or if they sell it to somebody else, then that would trigger that it would go to the new policy, or the new, the new rate structure. The other option that we had talked about, and I talked to Ms. Culler about this before, or after the meeting last time, is Mr. Berg recommended that if we, if we do what we're doing now, that we pay more than what we adopted before. Right now, we, we charge what they use at the residential rate, we pay back what they produce at seven cents a kilowatt hour. Mr. Berg's study indicate, or recommended 8.87 cents, which is more, so we, we, as we talked about with staff, we're okay with either one of those. We're going to go talk to the, the customers again on Tuesday, but we wanted at least to update you where we are, because it's not a public meeting, or you're there with a quorum, but just see if you have any feedback or concerns or comments, and then we'll move forward with the, with the residents on Tuesday.
If I like, the majority would rather just have to go vote.
I think that was the biggest, that was the biggest, most comments that we had, just to grandfather, those that are existing. And we have a couple of solar customers here, and, but we, we just wanted to inform you of what we, the discussions we had, and we will be having another meeting on Tuesday, but we didn't want to go and say, this is what we, we're comfortable with, this is what we're going to do, and then many of them not like it, come to you guys, and you say, well, we didn't have any input on this, so.
So you want direction tonight?
If you have any, if you have any preference over any of those two, I think we can live with either one of those, and we'll move forward. Like I said, most of the residents preferred the, the grandfathering. But, but I think if we allow the other one, it, it pays them back more than what they're getting now. So it's, it's either two options, if you don't have any comment, that's fine, we'll go meet with them on Tuesday, and we can come back with some resolution on your next meeting.
What was the rationale between the seven cents versus the recommended whatever cents?
Well, Mr., I, Ron, you might have to come and discuss this, it, it comes down to that difference is, is to so that there's not a subsidy with the regular customers, and Ron was looking at we, what we, what we pay for wholesale, not retail. So we use that still, what Mr. Berg recommended, so.
Yeah, we use the, our retail rate averages, as we were buying 6.2 cents, and then we added all, any transmission and distribution losses for savings, so making that up to seven cents, so. That's where that number came from.
I have a problem with grandfathering, or whatever, I'd just like to, whatever the majority is happy with, I guess.
What was the feeling on the time period, I know most people grandfathering don't want to, don't want a time limit on it, but what's the rationale in putting a time limit on it?
I'm guessing, I didn't talk to the others, but every, every time I drive down the street, I see more and more going up on the roofs, and I think people may be not quite realizing what they're paying for through the sales. So the people that are doing this, at least they know what they put in and what they can expect to give back, it is pretty sizable investment.
I think they talked about the March 1st, anything prior to March 1st, correct, with?
No.
As a group, they take advantage of the grandfathering, yes, but the, the length of time after, you know.
What Rocky Mountain Power did, as what Provo City did, they were also aware of the Berg study. They grandfathered in, anyone that had their solar system completed by the end of 2016. Anyone that would start a solar project after that would be under the new policy, and they would do the feed and tariff, wholesale, retail type of a payback. That's what most of the residents felt like was fair, mostly because we all signed the net metering agreement. Our city attorney tried to explain that it really wasn't an agreement, but it actually was, it was eight pages where we had to, you know, provide all of the stipulations, and then the city would then do this. We would abide by all other changes in utility costs, with the exception of the net metering agreement. So we had faith and trust in the city, and the residents that were there at the meeting were upset, as obviously we were also, because we felt like we'd been betrayed by the city. And I told, after I'd read the Berg report, I've gone through it, I've spent weeks and weeks studying it, I understand the way that's going in the future, but with the past and what Payson City, you know, issued in those eight-page documents that we signed, most of us feel like the expectation is that you would hopefully grandfather us in and acknowledge our effort and what we did to try to save the city, because the city actually does use the power that we send back. They send it down the line to someone else, they still charge the retail rate to them, and so, yes, it's a way of quote, paying for transportation, but, you know, that's kind of like paying for tolls on roads and highways, and nobody wants to do that, well, we don't want to pay the tolls for them. Anyway, but we appreciate what you had to say and whatever they decide.
I guess, what's the other, what's the term, the other people?
One of the concerns we talked about as staff, as far as the time limit on grandfathering, because technology's changing all the time, and we don't want, okay, we're going to grandfather these 100, and then when the next change comes, okay, we're going to grandfather these, and then we have all these different mechanisms or requirements that we have to charge differently. And so we, we want to be sensitive to the investment that's been provided, but I don't know, I don't know if we can control how long it's going to take for them, for whoever, because we don't know who, what somebody paid, somebody may have paid more. We want to allow sufficient time to be able to recoup their investment on that, but we want to get a time where we, we didn't want to have to have multiple grandfatherings depending on the technology, and if we change the, the policy in five more years, what?
Well, no, what does Rocky Mountain Power do, what does Provo City do, what does, I guess that's.
It's just, there is no timeline, as long as you own the property, you have net metering.
If you sell the property, the net metering is not transferred to the next owner or resident of the property.
Which we recommended as well.
So it just depends on what kind of a program or policy you create in the city. I mean, if I live in my home for the next 20 years, you know, and then I sell it, obviously that person wouldn't have net metering, and they would then have to abide by the current regulation that Payson City would have established, you know, at that point in time. That's the way Rocky Mountain is doing it, and that's the way Provo City is doing it.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
And we're only two hundredths of the residential population of the city that, you know, use power from the city. So it's, I calculated it out, my bill is like $10 more last month, $13 more this month than had we had net metering. So the city actually does make money, we figured over a year, I would have spent like $200 maybe. I have a limited system, now you've, you know, given. I have a limited system, now you've, you know, given people more up to 10 kilowatts. I only have the five, and so other people might have a bigger difference. So in about a 10-year period, we figured, yeah, well, we're providing the city, you know, $20,000. So if you want to look at it that way, the city makes more money, or if you want to look at it more as a type of public relations, you can move ahead with the new technology and planning, but maybe you could not punish us that we signed the agreement and understood when we purchased it, because everybody purchases it for a different cost, and it's just the residents' responsibility to do that research, it's not the city's.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one other question, I forgot what it was. Oh, so cutoff date for those coming in, because if there's somebody negotiating right now...
Well, it's March 1st.
But March 1st is already passed, so if somebody's like signing the papers right now, based off of...
We changed the policy.
Oh, we changed it.
Yeah, the policy's been changed since March, so there is a definite cutoff date.
Okay.
I'm good.
And so we'll need to bring back a resolution that allows for grandfathering, and that's the date that it brought this issue to light.
I think those that are now doing solar, they're put on the new policy, and that's bringing it forward. So it's just those that were up and running at the time we changed that policy.
So...
We're not going with time limit, I'm guessing, for direction. I think we want to run with the...
I agree.
With the owner of the property? Run with the utility bill that once they sell or rent.
Okay, so no grandfathering time, just if they sell or change ownership or rent. Okay? We'll meet with them on Tuesday, and we'll come back with a resolution or something for you to adopt.
Do we have a call session?
No.
No, but Mayor Proton, we have a scout and service, and he has a certificate.
Oh, want to present scout? Do you want to do that, Brian?
She was an hour late. We could have asked, we had on the phone.
Want to come up?
Actually, it's a little bit more entertaining at this point in time.
Good stuff.
So we'll do our scout presentation.
What's your name?
Will McLeod.
So welcome, Will. And what we'd like you to do, is we'd like everybody that's a scout that comes, tell something they like about scouting, so you can tell. Walk really loud and tell this audience what you like about scouting.
We normally go on lots of campouts, which are really fun, because you have things that you, like, we, like last campout, I did lots of carving, and we started a fire, which was funny, because all we did was flip the propane tank over, and it made the fire really big, the propane fire that we brought. It was running out of gas, so we flipped it over.
Okay, great. Thanks for coming. Can you just go around, shake hands with the councilman, the councilman on the panel?
Hi, we got nice to meet you in person. He called me last night.
I think we'll bring a certificate here.
Did you get a certificate?
Not yet.
I think you got one last time, right?
He was sick when our trip came, so. Yeah, I was sick, but, I was sick.
But they gave you a certificate.
But he got a...
Okay.
So you got, just so you...
We're making up. Scout is trustworthy.
Scout is trustworthy.
Yeah, he is.
So who?
I.
I.
Who seconded that?
I do.
Oh. I do. I heard this all moved, go ahead, yeah.